But we're going to open this meeting in the memory of Madeline Barber. She passed away yesterday suddenly, and we're still in shock. But we will open and close in her memory. So we're going to start with the flag salute. I'm going to turn it over to Nick.
Hello, everybody. It's LGBTQ+ Pride Month, so happy Pride Month, everybody. We're honored to have a great youth leader with us tonight to lead the pledge, not just for the LGBTQ+ community, but for Altadena as a whole. Ella Yurie is a 2022 graduate of John Muir High School. Ella is Yayad Muir. Ella is the founder, co-president, and social media manager of John Muir LGBTQ+ Alliance, and has worked tirelessly to help empower fellow LGBTQ+ students, find their voice, and really just feel proud of who they are. Ella's achievements are plenty: a Posse Scholar, a Queer Sanctuary founding member, a teaching artist, and executive board member for the Art Hour nonprofit. Ella will be attending Bucknell University in the fall, majoring in education. Ella plans to become an ethnic studies teacher, as well as a strong advocate and state-level policymaker for public education. Best of all, this brilliant and focused Altadena resident plans to return to us with designs to be a teacher back at John Muir High School. We're lucky to have this incredible Altidinan leading our pledge tonight. Thank you, Ella.
Please rise. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated.
Okay. Thank you for that, Ella. We're going to move on to roll call. Dorothy Wong?
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Let's get a roll call. Victoria Knapp?
Present.
Amy Leiford?
Present.
Hannah Petrie?
Present.
Dorothy Wong, present.
Darrell Aranda?
Present.
Thank you. Veronica Jones?
Present.
Thank you. Nick Aronson?
Present.
Thank you. Billy Malone?
Present.
Hello. Doug Cauliflower?
I am here.
Hi, nice to see you.
See you.
Reginald Wilkins?
I think I'm here.
Thank you. Chris O'Malley?
Excused.
Dr. Sandra Thomas?
Excused.
Alan Peck?
Excused.
Sylvia Vega?
Sylvia Vega?
Excused.
Thank you. Diane Marcusson?
Excused.
So we have a quorum.
You do.
Okay, we're going to move on to the approval of our June 21st, 2022 agenda. Victoria Knapp?
Good evening, fellow council members. The Altadena Town Council Executive Committee met on Tuesday, June 14th, to set the agenda for tonight's meeting, and the agenda was circulated to you on Saturday, June 18th. I've received no changes. Are there any changes? Seeing none, I motion that the agenda be approved as presented.
Agenda approved as presented.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The agenda is moved forward as presented. Okay, we're going to move on to the chairman's report. Tonight is our first night back after almost two and a half years. We're not on Zoom, and I don't have my pajama bottoms on, so I'm okay. But it's hard because we lost Madeline. It's been really hard to understand why she or how come she had to leave so suddenly, and we had no indication that anything was wrong. Madeline was the type of person that you wanted on your team. She was a hard worker. She believed in the council, and she really wanted to do good for the community. She will be missed. It's hard. It's just really hard to think that someone 55 years old goes to sleep and doesn't get up. So we just, we know we have to move forward, but we will never forget her, and we're here for her family. So I just want to end with that, that I already miss her, and I want us tonight to just maybe think of when we had interaction with her and how she reacted to any of us. It was always with warmth and kindness. So that's my report. We'll have the vice chairs report. Victoria Knapp?
Good evening, community.
Give me a moment of silence.
Sure.
I'm sorry.
We were going to do it now, so just give me just a second. Given the profound loss that her death has had on the council, I'm going to yield my time. But I thought it was important that Madeline never had a chance to have an in-person meeting with us. So we have kept a seat for her and her name placard here so that she's here with us in spirit. And so I would ask that everyone think of her, think of her husband, her son, and her grandson, and observe a moment of silence. Thank you.
Okay, we move on to our recording secretary, Nick Aronson.
Thank you, Chair. May 17th Altadena Town Council meeting minutes were sent to the full council last week. I received notes and made appropriate changes. We sent out the final document this weekend. Do my fellow council members have any further additions or corrections? Seeing none, with no further changes, I move we accept the May 17th, 2022 Altadena Town Council minutes as is.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Minutes carry forward as presented. Next, we have our treasurer's report. And Chris O'Malley isn't here, but he sent his report. He said the council began the period from April 28th to May 26th with a balance of $1,857.19. There were two withdrawals made: one for $13.99 for Go Daddy and one for $31.73 for checks. The ending balance was $1,811.47. That's the treasurer's report. Okay, we move on to Dorothy Wong, our corresponding secretary.
Thank you, Chair. Jones, so I was trying to get on the Internet, so sorry about that, because we did receive one correspondence regarding PFOW and asking for the town council to look at actions we might take coming up. So I'll share that letter with everybody for consideration. And then anything going on, we have lots of activities going on in July. You'll hear a lot about them during this meeting. And also, a special shout-out to July 2nd. The Mariposa Junction will be also expanded to an open street event. So that's in process, along with the other great stuff happening. Thank you, Chair.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Wong. Okay, we're going to move on to our public safety reports.
Councilmember Chair, before we move on, I just want to mention one thing is we usually at live meetings hand around a can for donations. I don't know if we have that today.
Oh, we do have the can in the back. I'll go get it. We'll do it afterwards.
And if we do that, may I suggest that anything that's given tonight goes towards Madeline's family or to purchase something for them.
Okay. Thank you for that. Yes, I forgot. We haven't been here passing around the can. We pass our can around. Okay. And as Councilmember Malone said, all the money will go to the family, and we will add to it and find out whatever else they may need. Okay, we're going to start with our California Highway Patrol Officer Jeremy Keller and Brian Bay.
Good evening, council members. Good evening, members of the public. Can everyone hear me okay? Great. I'm Officer Bay with the California Highway Patrol over at Altadena off of Windsor Avenue. Just want to give a report for the month of May for traffic collisions. We had 14 total traffic collisions within the unincorporated area. One is a vehicle versus pedestrian. There were six injury traffic collisions, as well as one hit-and-run, no bicyclist-related collisions, and two collisions that resulted in a DUI or an investigation for driving under influence out of those 14 collisions. As for events that the Highway Patrol was a part of for the month of May, we had two what we call special enforcement units. And enforcement days, we call them SEUs. One was for commercial vehicles primarily, as well as a seatbelt and safety commercial day or enforcement day. So that was very successful. I don't have the exact statistics regarding that, but I know that the commercial enforcement day was encompassing the whole entire I-210 corridor. We partnered with other Highway Patrol agencies or area offices, and I think we issued close to 500 citations for moving violations. So we're out there, we're very proactive, and we understand that we all use these freeways and that it's a major artery for our commerce. But with that being said, we utilize that for our transportation and our getting our kids to schools as well. So that, and I also want to say that the Highway Patrol is hiring. We're trying to get the thousand new members to join our agency. So if anyone knows of anyone that's interested, please do not hesitate to contact me or myself or Officer Boyd, and we can give you more information regarding that, as well as we have our Explorer and Senior Volunteer Program to help out the community as well. That concludes my time. Are there any questions regarding the council members? Yes, sir.
You mentioned the Explorer Program. Could you tell me the age on that?
Yes, sir. So the age group is from 15 years old to, I believe, 20 years old. And that includes, you know, prospective applicants that are interested in life in the Highway Patrol or maybe in, you know, public service. Duties include, you know, going, you know, drill and understanding vehicle violations, as well as what we do during traffic collisions, DUI checkpoints, and just other ride-alongs, other kind of activities as well.
And is this a summer program or an ongoing program?
It's ongoing. Yeah, a year-round.
And then my last question was you mentioned that you were looking to hire more people. Is that specifically officer of administration, or what levels is that?
So, yeah, great, great point. So we do want to hire more officers, but we do have a lot of non-uniform positions as well that are being offered. So if you're a maintenance technician, maintenance personnel. Also, we have dispatchers. We are in a really good need of dispatchers to help take these calls and help us out as well. So it's open to a lot, but there's a big push for people on the roadways.
Thank you. And we can put a link on our website if you have one as well.
Okay.
On our website.
Are those positions mostly here?
So it's statewide. I'll say that it's statewide, but a lot of the new applicants that pass our academy, they do come to the high metropolitan area. So that'll be, Altadena is kind of one of those areas, but as well as the Golden Gate area, the Bay Area, and down in border.
Okay.
Okay, any more questions? No questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have our Altadena Sheriff's Station, Captain Williams. If you, do you want to wipe it off, or are you come? We have wipes.
I'm fine.
Okay.
I trust him. Good evening. Can everyone hear me okay? Thanks for having me here. It's great to be here in person. I was just mentioning to someone the last time I was actually in this room, I believe I was being interviewed for the position, so.
Yep.
I did. First, I'd like to start off with my condolences to Madeline Barber and her family. Also, my condolences to the town council. She will be missed. Just a few stats. Our aggravated assaults are down 2%, and those are the violent crimes. And most of those are from domestic violent issues or some assaults that we have or we see in the group homes. So not much going on in the streets. We had a few incidents. I'll talk about one in a bit. And our property crimes, that's still a problem, but they're actually down 4% compared to what they were last year around this time. And again, the main problems are burglary thefts and catalytic converter thefts. So we did have two incidents I want to talk about. We had an in-custody death where we had someone in our custody. He was being detained on a traffic stop. At some point, we don't know when, he ingested some narcotics, and he went into distress. He made it to the hospital, and he passed away. We were thinking it was fentanyl, and we treated it as such. The public health or hazmat came out from the fire department. They tested it the next day. It was not fentanyl. It was just cocaine. So we're trying to figure out how much he actually ingested. We'll find out later, but that's still being investigated by our homicide unit. Nothing that we did, we didn't use any force or anything like that on the person. It's just during the traffic stop, he went into distress, and then come to find out, he ingested narcotics. We did have another incident. It was a shooting on Harriet. This is about a couple of weeks ago. Gentleman was in front of the house. Somebody drove by, some words were exchanged. One person didn't agree, and the guy in the car let off two shots and hit the person. He was transported to the hospital, and he recovered. Matter of fact, I believe he's been discharged. And the areas where he was shot, he's really fortunate because it's surprising that he didn't pass away from the areas that he was shot on his body. Our detectives are handling that investigation, and it's ongoing. We do have a few events coming up. Again, I was talking about the catalytic converter thefts. That's been an issue nationwide. So we've been trying to put on these catalytic converter events. We had one last week. I'm sorry, the week, yeah, last week. It went off without a hitch. We have some innovative equipment where we can easily etch a vehicle or etch a catalytic converter pretty quickly. So we got that. We had our ramps. We had it here at the station. We didn't set up for appointments. We just said, come one, come all. And we were able to etch around 60, 65 vehicles in a four-to-five-hour period, which is actually not that bad. So being that we have this equipment on loan to us for a while, we're going to use it as often as we can. So we're hoping to have another event in the next month or so. And if we do, we'll just put it out on social media. We didn't have it on a Saturday. We normally have it on Saturdays. This time, we had it on a Friday. The next time, we're going to change up the days just to see what's best for everyone. And hopefully, you guys can come out and get your catalytic converter etched. And that's a great way of us investigating. If we catch somebody with catalytic converters, we can attach it to a victim, and we can prosecute that person for the crime. We catch a lot of people all the time with catalytic converters in the back of their cars and their trunks, and we don't, we don't know who it belongs to. And we can hold them for a couple of days, and after that, they're gone. If the DA won't have a victim, they won't prosecute. So this is a great way for us to attach that property to a victim. And it helps with trying to prosecute the people that are doing these crimes. We actually caught a few people maybe about a month ago, maybe less than that, with a whole bunch of catalytic converters. And of course, we did the best we could. We were looking for victims, and we couldn't find any. We had to let them go, but at least we have them in our database, and we're keeping an eye on them, so. Another event coming up is August 2nd, and I'll talk more about this next month. We're having our National Night Out. It's going to be at Farnsworth Park between, I want to double-check the hours, but I want to say 3:00 to 7:00. It could be 5:00 to 7:00. I'll double-check. We are trying to get some things in order before we send the flyer out. But just remember, mark your calendars. April, August 2nd, National Night Out event at Farnsworth Park. And you come out, enjoy your time there. There'd be some food and games and all of that, and everything should be free, at least on the sheriff's department's part, so. Other than that, that's all I have to present unless there's any questions for me.
Are there any questions? Councilmember Aranda?
So my catalytic converter was stolen a couple of days after a etching sketch, etching, and then it was stolen again, a new one was stolen again, while I was on vacation about a week before the next event.
It was etched, too?
Nope. And between etchings, I got stolen twice. So the first time, I was parked in the church parking lot, and the second time, it was in front of my house here at Jackson Elementary. So if you find, if you found any Honda Element catalytic, I'll say it's fine.
Okay.
Because it's definitely, I've registered both of them with my insurance company. I went ahead and purchased a cat protector.
Great.
Because just to deal with having it returned and everything is just not worth it.
Just to explain, you know, the catalytic converter, we do etch. It does not stop the person from taking the catalytic converter. Maybe sometimes if they can see it's etched, maybe they determine they'll move on to the path least resistant. But the best way, one of the best ways is to get a cage or protector underneath your catalytic converter that stops them from, or hinders them from being able to cut it off. Now, if you haven't seen a video of a catalytic converter being taken, you ought to check it out on YouTube. It's two cuts, zhup, zhup, and it's off in less than a minute. With the cage, we've seen people try to get it off. It takes normally around 30 minutes to 45 minutes, and it's noisy. So that kind of deters people if they see that cage.
Is the automotive shop that was on Walnut still providing that service?
You know, I don't know. I'll have to find out. But we did have an auto shop that said they would do it. This was on our first one. That was back in February, so I will double-check on that. But for our next catalytic converter event, I told the person putting it on, please find someone that will provide that type of service. That way, when you do come, at least we can give you a name of a place that will provide that service. And it's going to cost a couple of hundred bucks, but I understand a catalytic converter, if, you know, it's covered by insurance.
$3,500 without insurance.
Okay.
Do that twice.
The main cars that are being targeted are Toyota Priuses, if I'm saying that right, Priuses, Prius, or high-rise and trucks because they're easy to get under. Was your?
Honda Element, number two.
Yeah.
Same as Darrell. The first time, they actually took off the four nuts, so they must have zip, 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 four nuts. So I had the muffler shop weld the nuts on. So then they just cut the pipes further off next time, which then that destroyed not just the Cadillac, it destroyed everything. So I think the cage is probably the best way to go, I'd recommend.
It is. And there are some people, they're amateurs out there that don't know what a catalytic converter looked like, and they'll just cut anything off the car, so.
Any more questions? Okay, thank you, Captain. What was that?
Thanks.
Is this happening at night? Oh, we have a question.
Oh, yes, it is. Mostly happening at night when people are asleep. Two in the mornings, mostly. And we pinpoint the area where it's happening the most. We're trying to do more patrol checks in that area. We'll continue that. But again, it's, you know, a crime of opportunity, and it's a matter of trying to catch them in the act or after it happened.
Do you recommend that we keep our lights on?
Yeah, there are a few things I recommend. Thanks for mentioning that. Parking it in your driveway, that's a good recommendation, under lights. Try to keep it in the garage if you can. If you have a lot of stuff in your garage and you can clear it out, I recommend doing that so you can put your car in that garage. And try not to park it so far away from your house. Neighborhood watch. If you tell your neighbors about the same thing, if they see anything crazy or out of place, suspicious, please contact the sheriff's department right away.
I must say, I was parked in front of my house underneath the streetlight, and when they stole it the first time, I was parked in the church parking lot underneath that streetlight.
That was the death.
Yeah. So they move real fast. I don't know if you guys have those tools. I do. And it's very fast.
Okay, thank you, Captain.
Thanks for having me.
All right, can you take that basket out in the audience and?
This is for Madeline Barber's family.
Yeah. Yeah, I will. Thank you. Okay, is Marie Grekin here from Fire?
She is not, but I'm here.
Oh, okay, we'll have you. Come on. Introduce yourself.
Hello, my name's Theodore S. Faboda. I'm one of the battalion chiefs in Locking Yacht at Flint Ridge at Fire Station 82. There's three of us. I'm on the A shift, which is on today. Maria Grekin is our community service liaison, and she's on vacation. So she asked if I would come and present our run statistics for the month of May. So I have those for you. So month of May was a slow month. It's about to get busier, as you can imagine, with the dryness of the brush and the threat of fireworks. So for the month of May, we went on a total of 59 medical calls. So of the 59 medical calls, 48 of those were transported by advanced life support with paramedics onboard. And it looks like the majority of them were psychological rescues, also major injuries, which are probably created from traffic accidents, some trauma there, and persons sick. So my safety tip of the month is all fireworks are illegal, even safe and sane. They all are very dangerous, and they start fires. So if you see people with fireworks, ask them to stop and go to a permitted venue. I believe the Rose Bowl is a permitted venue for fireworks, and Crescenta Valley High School, I believe, is also a permitted event for July 4th. And with that, I've worked a few 4th of Julys. I've worked many, actually. And fireworks are real. Last July 3rd, I worked, and we had small starts from fireworks up the Crest Highway, which we were able to catch early. But had we not got there in a timely fashion, it might have been different. But so just, I can only stress fireworks. Just if you see it, ask them to stop, okay? That's all that I have, and I'm open to questions.
I have.
Yes.
Can I? My first needs, so if I can, it's okay.
Go ahead, it's fine. Go ahead.
Okay. All right. My question is, a while back, not too long ago, there were a lot of incidences with fire trucks going past my house. And I guess it was small fires, and then one time I even saw some smoke. So are we having problems with people camping in foothills near Bear Oaks or Palo, that area?
Just count it.
I can't speak specifically about that off the top of my head, but yes, homelessness and homeless encampments are real. They're all over. So.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Dorothy Wong, Councilmember Wong?
Hi. Just quickly, last year, you guys had no fireworks signs that we could get?
Yes, yes, and we are going to distribute those soon. Yes, we do. Yes, we do.
Altadena's already got theirs up.
Are you talking about at the fire station? Or where are you talking about?
We were, they were cardboard or light cardboard, and we were able to kind of put them up Cheney Trail, for example, and along Loma Alta.
Okay, yeah, we have a fireworks program and reporting. So it says here, yeah, no fireworks signs will be distributed. Trying to see the date here. Starting June 12th. So we're here. So June 12th through July 10th. Anyways, yes, I'm sure we're a little behind, but yeah.
Yeah, we were able to pick them up from the fire station.
Okay, yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Yes.
Is there a number that we can call? Because it's not really safe walking up to somebody setting off their own personal fireworks note and saying, please stop. So, is there a number that we can call that, um, would actually get a response?
Call the sheriff, the sheriff's station.
The sheriff's station.
Captain, will you give the number out, Captain?
Yeah, it's, uh, six two six, seven nine eight, one one three one, or nine one one.
Excellent, thank you.
Can you send over the mic, please?
Cap.
Six two six.
Seven nine eight.
Seven nine eight.
One one three one.
One one three one. Or as they said, nine one one.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you for that information. Okay, we're gonna move on to our special presentations, and we have two of them, and we're gonna start with LA Metro. Jefferson Rosa Community Relations Manager. Okay. We're gonna just ask, I'm just going to say, I'm gonna ask everybody to please stay within your time. Um, tonight, we want to get out, thank you.
Was that ten minutes?
Ten minutes, yeah. Is that what you were told? And then we have questions and answers, yeah?
Would you let me know, thank you so much, I appreciate it. Okay, thank you all so much for having me today, I really appreciate, um, and, uh, Mike. Okay, is that better? Oh, okay, thank you so much for having me, uh, this evening, and, uh, my condolences to, uh, the Town Council and, uh, the Altadena community. So I have a presentation for all, all of you today on, um, Metro's Next Gen Bus Update, and I've also merged it in with our, uh, Metro Micro Service. So if I can start with the first slide, please? Uh, next slide, thank you. Um, so in December of 2020, uh, Metro started implementation of the Next Gen Bus Plan. Uh, these were changes to multiple bus lines around the county to synthesize and try to condense some of the bus lines that were, um, less utilized, uh, to provide more frequent service in bus lines that were, uh, had higher demand. Um, in June of 2021, um, a majority of the Next Gen Bus Plan was implemented in the San Gabriel Valley and the Arroyo Verdugo area. Uh, changes were made to the lines that you see up on the slide. Uh, more relevant to this area, bus lines six eight seven and a new line six six two, which I'll go over in the next slide. Um, the Altadena-Pasadena and Sierra Madre Metro Micro Zone was also established. This is our Metro Micro is a microtransit system that is on a three-year pilot program or a three-year pilot timeline. Um, in December of 2021, uh, some more route changes were established with the addition of line six six zero, which again, I'll go on the next slide. Um, in February of this year, 2022, um, due to an increased shortage of bus operators, uh, there have been a lot of service cancellations, so, uh, Metro has actually reduced the number of, um, the number of, uh, or the frequency of those trips in order to make it a little bit more reliable. And I think that slide may be cut off short, so if you can scroll. I think part of the information is cut off, yeah. Thank you so much. Um, so, uh, service levels were reduced in order to make the bus lines a little bit more predictable on our, uh, transit application that Metro is partnering with. And in June of this year, Metro will be for, for, Metro will be working on restoring, uh, service and restoring, uh, service reliability, which, um, is essentially the accuracy of the timeliness of buses. Um, accounting for post-COVID increase in traffic. And you can go on to the next slide, please? So this is what the Metro Micro, this is Metro Micro's, uh, or microtransit zone, uh, for the Altadena-Pasadena and Sierra Madre zone looks like in the backdrop of the bus line changes that I mentioned. So in order to, um, mitigate for the loss of the bus lines that you see in the dotted black line, so those lines that were discontinued, um, Metro launched Metro Micro, which is a microtransit service. It is a bus that fits up to eight people. Um, it is very similar to, uh, rideshare applications such as Lyft and Uber. Um, one thing to point out from this map that you see here is that after community feedback, the zone was extended to reach on the north, where it says, uh, Loma Alta, to reach the foothills for folks that would like to take a microtransit service to the trailheads of any, um, trails. Uh, and it was also expanded to include the, um, Huntington Memorial Hospital on the bottom left, as well as the, I believe it's the Sierra, or my apologies, the, uh, Arcadia Station on the Gold Line. So if we could go to the next slide, thank you. So a couple of details, I can't quite read up there, so I'm gonna go off my notes, apologize. So a couple of details that you can see here is a heat map of the usage of the Metro Micro System in the, uh, Pasadena-Altadena-Sierra Madre Zone. Uh, on the left, you see origination, where the trips are starting, and on the right, you see the destination of where those trips are ending. Most of those are focused in the Pasadena area and along the, uh, Gold Line, but definitely Altadena-Sierra Madre has a lot of usage. Um, on, uh, on a daily weekday basis, the rides range between four hundred and sixteen to four hundred and sixty-nine rides per day. Uh, the average trip time that our users are taking is fourteen to fifteen minutes to get to and from their destinations. And on average, the distances are three to three point five miles, um, long. So where some folks may have lost service to a bus stop or a bus line, Metro Micro is filling in those gaps for those short trip distances. Next slide, please. So a little bit about Metro, more about Metro Micro, next slide. Um, so Altadena-Pasadena, uh, Sierra Madre is one of eight zones that you see here countywide where, um, Next Gen, um, synthesized certain bus lines. The Altadena-Pasadena-Sierra Madre Zone operates seven days a week, between 5:30 in the morning to 10:00 PM. Um, as you just saw on the previous slide, um, Loma Alta is the northern boundary, the two-ten on the west, and Santa Anita on the east. Um, this zone was launched in June of 2021, and it is one of our top three in terms of ridership and usage. So it is very well utilized. Um, the pilot program is running between December of 2020 to December of 2023, uh, at which point the Metro Board will review the pilot program, the results, the usage, um, and the cost of operating the program, and kind of determine from there what the next iteration of the program will be. Next slide, please. And so very quickly, just to go over a refresher for any of you who have not used Metro Micro, it is a very simple, um, application, and for those who are not digitally connected, we do have a hotline that can be called. This is the same hotline for anything Metro-related, if you have questions about our bus system, our rail system, and now our microtransit system, that number is three two three, go Metro, three two three four six six thirty-eight seventy-six. Or you can download the Micro app, there's a little icon image there for you all to see what that looks like. It's very similar to other rideshare applications, you choose your location, where you're going, um, and then it'll give you a time estimated for a pickup and a time estimated for a drop-off to your location. Uh, next slide, please. I would just like to mention that, um, there are a couple of ways to pay. You can pay with a, with a preloaded tap card in the Metro Micro van, so there's a reader in there. So once it comes to pick you up, you can pay as you board, or you can load a credit card, um, to the downloaded application where you can create an account, and that way, um, you can just pay off your phone. There is no cash acceptance for the sake of safety, um, so no cash can be used. Again, um, you can, uh, book seats for up to eight riders. And if you, there's anybody, um, who needs accessibility, um, accommodations such as a wheelchair, um, or a bike, you can definitely note that in the application to make sure that the vehicle that picks you up is able to accommodate that. Next slide, please. Uh, that's pretty much, uh, again, going through that. And the cost of Metro Micro is only one dollar per trip. Um, it does not give you a transfer to, uh, to transfer for a system. If you go to a Metro, uh, bus or rail stop, you will have to then tap in for the one seventy-five for that ride. But it is one dollar. Um, this was set as an introductory period, uh, price. However, there are no, um, no conversations to change this price at this time. For safety and security, all vehicles are equipped with security camera, cameras, um, as a level of safety. Uh, and the drivers are Metro employees who do go through a background, background check. Um, so there are those levels of security and safety. Masks are also, um, required at this time because it is an enclosed space. And this is our Metro Micro contact information. Thank you, yes.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Councilmember Nat?
Um, I have two questions. One, what is the min, the minimum age that someone can ride on their own?
I believe the minimum age is thirteen.
Okay. And then, do you have data on, like, timeliness? So for instance, if we know that we're going to have a teen that's taking it for the first time, does it tend to run within, like, within the window of time that they're supposed to be picked up?
Yes, so I believe the latest average, uh, wait time that was, uh, documented was about eighteen minutes. And, uh, you are able to book rides in advance, so if you know you want to book a ride for tomorrow at a certain time, I, I believe you can book a ride up to seven days in advance.
And just for the public, I would highly recommend that. There was a, uh, situation where I needed my son to take Metro Micro home, and he could not get a Metro, because he just, it was the last day of school.
There's a, a high demand for sure.
Yeah, high demand.
Yeah, so as I mentioned, uh, this area is one of the top three utilized areas. Uh, very similar to, um, the need for bus drivers system-wide in the county. We are also facing, uh, a, a need for, um, operators of Metro Micro as well.
So. We have another question here.
Yes.
Okay.
In looking at the map, um, of the Metro Micro areas, the Eagle Rock Highland Park Glendale route is actually quite close to the Altadena-Pasadena-Sierra Madre, and I wonder if there's any conversation about making those connect?
There hasn't at this time. I know that as we near 2023, the, the, uh, the project, the program as a whole will be reevaluated. Uh, there were certain lines that, uh, that were cut in that area as well, so that's why that zone was made. Uh, but at this time, there aren't conversations to merge or connect the both. And I would like to know, um, of the eight zones, you can take Metro Micro within each zone, but you cannot take from one zone to another.
Councilmember Malone?
Yeah, um, I, I was, uh, I haven't really used it, I think it's a great service. Um, but there was one time when I needed something across the other side of town, and I went and I had to drop something off, and I, I called Micrometro, I downloaded the app, and it said it was gonna be forty-five minutes before one was gonna show up at that location. It was a nice day, I walked home, by the time I, you know, halfway across town in forty-five minutes. But it made me think about people, you know, maybe elderly person who, who, or somebody who's gonna use the Micrometro to go to the store. If they're waiting forty-five minutes for it to show up, they go to the store, are they gonna have to wait forty-five minutes to return? How do you plan a return trip for somebody who is maybe, uh, has transit issues?
Yeah, absolutely, thank you for that. That's a, a comment that I can certainly bring back to our operations team. I think one of the biggest issues that the operations team is facing right now is that shortage of operators. Um, we have a, a, a set fleet per zone, it is a, a pilot program that has been funded to a certain extent. So the, the challenge of meeting, uh, folks where they're at, at the time that's needed, uh, is a bit of a challenge. I think scheduling, uh, a trip in advance would probably be the best option. Um, the op, the operators are definitely trying to make sure that they are as close as possible, as competitive to other rideshare services. Um, it is part of public transit as a means to mitigate the service reduction of bus operation. So I think the best response that I can give you is, um, to do, uh, a scheduling ahead of time, if possible, the day before or a few hours before. Um, if you know, uh, someone needs to go to the grocery store at a certain timeframe and sort of schedule it, schedule a pickup and schedule a, a return.
And on those scheduled times, that would be pretty, like, Councilmember Nat was saying, that would be pretty much within a window if you schedule a return trip like that.
Correct, it would be a lot easier to find a ride at that particular time if it's scheduled ahead of advance. You'd be into the, sort of into the program.
And I know there's a challenge with everything up here, because I've tried ridesharing and everything, and it's okay getting a rideshare up here, but trying to book one to go the other direction, it's like there's no cars available, so.
It's a challenge.
Yeah, and you need to wait for them to come up the hill. So it is an issue we face, but hopefully the Micrometro is something that can actually fill that gap that we don't even have with regular rideshare.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Wong.
Hi, so I think we, uh, got so engaged in this conversation, we've run out of time for our, our next, uh, presentation. But can you just give us a quick, what is, uh, the active transportation update without the details?
Yes, if I can give you a quick announcement, uh, Metro is updating our active transportation strategic plan. This is the plan that outlines where bikeways should be established, uh, safety, uh, uh, for pedestrian zones countywide. Metro is currently doing outreach for that. I have provided, uh, Dot Wong, our councilwoman here, uh, the details for the next technical, um, working group meeting. So if any of you are interested in attending that, um, uh, we can certainly, uh, add you to the list to attend. Metro is looking for community input on where biking and walking is important and where there are safety issues, so that we can input that in the plan that's being updated.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all so much.
Yeah, just, um, get all that information to Councilmember Wong, so she puts it on our website.
Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you for being here. It says it on the card, they can read.
I, before we get into our next presentation, I just wanted to let the community know, since there are many people that have not been to a meeting in person, that we have public comment cards in the back, they're on the piano, they're blank. You can fill these out and submit them if you have a question, a concern, a comment about anything that's going on in Altadena. Um, I mention that now because I know that there will likely be questions regarding our next presentation regarding, um, waste disposal in Altadena. So if you have a question that you already know you're going to need answered, you can fill that in, and then you can just turn it in to anybody at the, at the end of the table. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we move on to our next presentation. It's LA County Public Works Altadena Sanitation Contract. Steve Maleski. Maleski? Okay.
Thank you for having me, I don't have much, it's very short, so it won't take much of your time. So my name is Steve Maleski, I work for LA County Public Works, and is the volume okay, or am I moving this? We're good? Bring it up a little. I just, oh, I can do it like that, okay. All right, we're good? Can't see. So I just wanted to provide an update for the, uh, trash services for your area. Uh, my team, and I brought Jose, Jesus Zerrado with me, he oversees the day-to-day operations for your trash contracts, uh, and on behalf of the county, and then I oversee all the residential trash collections as well. So for your community, I think I was here probably three years ago. It was me and my team that presented to let you know about that, that, that current Athens contract was gonna expire, and we thought we'd have it in place by then, but we're finally ready, the next one's ready to go. So we did an RFP process where we request proposals, and we had four companies submit. Uh, there was Universal Waste Systems, Bertec Waste Industries, Athens Services, and Waste Management. And so an evaluation committee reviewed these, and the highest rated was UWS, that's Universal Waste Systems. And they had, they also had the lowest price at, uh, thirty-two dollars and fifty-eight cents, which I believe is the price you pay per month now, that's ninety-seven seventy-four per quarter. Uh, so the Board of Supervisors awarded the contract just recently on June fourteenth, and the service is set to start on October third. So we got a little bit of time. Uh, during this transition process, you're probably gonna have UWS, bless you, um, collecting from the Athens carts. You all have Athens carts at your homes right now. Uh, and so, starting October first, or the third, actually, because it's a Monday, you'll have a new provider, UWS, you'll see new trucks out there, and then they'll be in the And then they'll be in the process for about a month swapping out the carts to their own. What else we got? So UWS is going to be sending out information. They'll hold another public meeting similar to this, where they provide much more detailed information. This will be in September because that's just a few weeks before the start of the contract. One of the big changes that's in the waste industry right now is the organic waste collection. What that means is basically food waste can no longer go to landfills. This is in response to Senate Bill 1383. This was a greenhouse gas reduction bill that was passed back in 2016 and with the goal of slowing down climate change. So the polar bearers, thank you. So the big change for that is you're going to put your food into the green waste containers with the new contract. So what has changed? So the contracts come in two parts. We have what we call the county services. This is not necessarily what's happening at your house, but the services that we provide in the area. There's already illegal dumping collection for your community. But that's on a, it's a response. We have to tell the waste hauler to go pick it up, and they'll pick it up. The new contracts, we call it a sweep. Well, we don't have to tell the waste haulers. They're just going to pick it up. So that should keep your community cleaner. Then we have added what we call hot zones. And so if there's a, I don't know. I brought a map, and I can show you later in the back if you want. But there's probably five or six different hot zones in your area where that'll receive daily monitoring. So every single day, the waste hauler will be in that area to remove the illegal dumping. There is public receptacles. You already have public receptacles for the most part at bus stops and some pedestrian areas. But there might be the option then at a trailhead. I know Cheney Trail, there's been talk over the years. Sometimes somebody just pulls a trash container to an area from somebody's house and puts it at the trailhead. We might be able to provide an actual trash container for the trailheads. And people experiencing homelessness, this is a huge issue for many, many areas. I heard it mentioned earlier today. One of the services we're offering is to provide a dumpster at a large encampment to try to keep the neighborhood cleaner. There's mixed feelings on this because you're providing free services to the community, to the people who are living there. And you're somewhat enabling their lifestyle like that. But it's also keeping your community cleaner. So there's a trade-off on that. Customer service, what's going to happen at your house? Everything that you have today, same things. I just highlighted a few things that are going to be more. So every service you have today, plus, at the same price. So the bulky item will change to four times per year if you have a bulky item. It's unlimited bulky items. Five times a year excess trash. Five times, five bags of excess trash and 10 bags of green waste. So four times a year, you may call the waste hauler and schedule a collection for those things. Wooden lumber, you can have two 70-pound bundles of that removed. E-waste, electronic waste, you can have 10 items removed. And then also like a bonus bulky item. When you start and cancel service, the idea is when you move in and move out, you're getting an extra bulky item. Now we can switch over to the bears. Let's just go ahead to the map because that's probably the most interesting thing. So everybody that lives kind of to the northeast of that red line will get mandatory bear carts for free. We're going to start off by swapping out. It's going to be the green. Remember, you're going to start putting your food into the green waste container. So it's the black container should be clean. Not clean as garbage can be, but it shouldn't be smelly like it is today. So the bear should be attracted to your green waste container. So that's going to be the priority, is to convert all the existing bear containers over to the green waste to protect those. The new containers will have a gravity release to them. I know some of the ones that are out there today, Athens put them out, and there's like, sometimes they have a clip or something you have to put on there. I don't know how many people still have those. But the new ones are going to be the gravity release where when the truck comes and turns it upside down, it automatically empties out. So you won't have to unlock it. What else do I want to touch on? So if you have a bear container, you're going to keep that bear container, except if you're one of the original bear container people. The original contract, there was 140 containers. I don't know how many of those are still alive because they're 10 years old now, and that's about their useful life. So all the newer ones that have been distributed over the last couple of years, the county paid for those. Those are our containers. So Athens is going to leave those in place, and the new waste hauler will use those. So there's the testing. That's how the bears test. It's funny because that's literally a picture from the testing for the bear carts. They just put it in there. As long as it can survive for an hour, and the bear can't get inside, it passes. So that's it. That's all I have. Any questions? I can either answer them right now. Yes.
Oh, Councilmember Wong.
Will the services that are in place for seniors, like rollout services, map over to the new provider? Or how will that be handled?
That's our goal. We always try to do that. Like if you were 62 or older, you're entitled to a senior citizen. It could be a discount for financial reasons, or it could be inability to move the containers down to the street. We would prefer to, you're obviously not 61 now. Nobody gets younger, unfortunately. So we're going to try to roll that automatically over to the new waste hauler. Sometimes there's some hiccups in the system, but that would be our goal, is that you would not have to do anything on your part.
And then if you're already paying for rollout services as an additional service, will that go over too?
We will try. Sometimes, depending on how many people have that service, that can get missed, and you would have to maybe call. Like if you thought you were going to get that service and you didn't get it picked up automatically like that, then you might have to call them and let them know. But we're going to try to transition all that over automatically for you.
What's the start date for compost bin?
I wouldn't know if I, enough on compost bin, but it'll be... Oh, yeah, okay. It's October 1st, which is actually the 3rd because that's the first Monday of the month, October 3rd. So don't put anything in there but green waste, traditional green waste, until that time.
Just a quick reminder. We do want to hear your questions, but we want to stick with the process. If you can fill out a public comment card, we will get to them. Just the questions right now are from the council.
Okay. I'm sorry. I'll pay attention.
I just have a quick question because up here, lots of bigger, lots of bushes, lots of trees. Containers tend to be a lot larger than the city containers in Pasadena. Is that going to remain the same, the size of the containers that we see in the green waste and regular waste? Or are they going to be going to like a standard city size? Because some homes up here, like we have two green waste because we have a lot of trees that standard comes with. But is that going to remain the same? Or are they going to go, the size of the container is going to be smaller?
The size of the containers for most areas is pretty standard. It's a 96-gallon container. I'd say about this high, maybe two and a half feet wide. It's a pretty standard size. If you needed more, you could always get additional. But you get, for the basic rate, you get one trash, one recycling, one green waste. If you need more, you can pay for more. You get a discount on the second one, but not the third. And if you have a lot of green waste, and you could always get a dumpster. Green.
Green waste.
Green.
Yeah. I thought you said e-waste.
No, I'm sorry. Green waste. If you had like a lot of green waste that you regularly trim your bushes or something, you could get a dumpster. But if you only have it maybe a few times a year, then you could take advantage of our eight bags of excess green waste, and you can call it in up to four times per year.
Any more questions?
Just one.
Okay.
Will they take batteries or not?
Batteries.
They'll double A, triple A batteries? That's always a problem, batteries.
Yeah. So the idea, e-waste is anything that's powered. Anything with a cord or with a battery is considered e-waste. But you know what?
Yeah, often they don't take batteries.
Battery. I'll have to get back to an actual battery, yeah. Sorry, I don't have the answer to that. I'll get back to it.
Okay. Councilmember Wong, we're going to wrap the questions up.
Yeah, just, so some of our streets obviously are very narrow or tricky. So will the new company be able to handle some of that? Athens kind of has special trucks and, you know, that can kind of back in.
Yeah, this company, UWS, they were previously, well, they have contracts in the Malibu area and the mountains in Malibu. So I wouldn't say that that area is any simpler than your community up against the mountains here. It's pretty similar. So typically, they'll use a smaller-sized truck that are available. They know what they're doing. And we'll have Jesus keeping an eye on them.
Thank you.
Okay, I think that's it. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to go ahead.
Thank you. And you'll be around for a public comment if we have questions, right?
Okay. And I'm going to leave the map that you saw up on the screen. I have a copy back there.
Okay, perfect. Okay. All right, thank you. Moving along, we're going to go to our community reports now. Nikki Winslow.
Hi. Again. I know, I'm seeing you guys all the time lately. I think we take batteries, by the way. I just texted one of my staff, but I'm pretty sure you can drop batteries at the library.
Okay.
Yeah. We dispose of them properly.
We probably should have a box in here for batteries. Yeah, we should. I'll ask. Okay.
So I guess we'll just start, and then you can catch up to me with it. So, good evening. Good to see all of you guys in person again, even though I've been running into a lot of you at events lately. For members of the community that haven't met me yet, my name's Nikki Winslow. I'm the district director for the Altadena Library District. Hi, Joan. I'd also like to offer condolences to the council and the Barber family on behalf of the library. And thank you, as usual, for providing me time to update everybody what's going on at our Altadena libraries. So I wanted to start out by talking about our Board of Trustees election that's coming up in November. Of our five seats, three of them are open this year. They continue to be at-large, so anybody can run for any of those seats. We're working on districting, but that wouldn't take effect till the election in 2024. It's a really short filing period, which is why I haven't talked about it much yet. You'll be able to file to run for a seat between July 18th and August 12th at 5:00 p.m. So I'll mention it again next month when we present. But it's only like a couple of weeks that you can file for one of those open seats. So if you know of anyone that might be interested in serving on our Board of Trustees, please point them to our website or in my direction, and I can talk to them about it. Also, the board will be passing a resolution at their meeting next Monday to put the special tax lien related to the ballot measure passage that went through in 2020 on the tax roll for next year. It will appear on the October 2022 property bill. We did send out a mailer the week of April 25th to all Altadena property owners, so they're aware of this tax that's coming up. There is an ability to file for a low-income exemption. The deadline to do so is June 30th. So if you know of anyone that would qualify, there's information on our website, or send them my way. I've been talking about the special tax for almost two years now. So I'm happy to answer any questions that might come up. But we want to make sure people that are eligible for the exemption are aware of that. You can pull the application from the website, or we have printed copies at both of the libraries. Just a quick reminder that both of the library buildings will be closed on Monday, July 4th in recognition of Independence Day. And we currently have a vacancy at our library, in our library aide position. This is an entry-level 12-hour-a-week position. It's really good for like high school students or people looking for just some additional income. Feel free to visit our website at altedinallibrary.org/employment. And we're going to be reviewing applications, I think, beginning next week. So it's summer reading program time. This year, the program runs from June 4th through July 30th. We have activities and programs for all ages, including for baby and toddlers. They have their own special program. They can read up to 24 books, not themselves, have them read to them. We also have outdoor storytimes, some of them being held at Charles White Park, pajama storytimes, as well as bilingual toddler storytimes. We also have a program for pre-K through sixth grade. They can track their minutes read, earn badges to complete the program, and collect lots of fun prizes. There's also a lot of really fun programs for them, including a magician that we're going to have at the library this Thursday, the 23rd, Family Steam Club, and lots more. For teens, this summer, the emphasis is on a summer of service. So we have lots of opportunities for teens to volunteer, including a teen gardening program, Reading Buddies, which is where the teenagers help early readers as they read to them, as well as serving on the Teen Leadership Council. Again, lots of fun programs and events. And then, of course, we can't leave the adults out. We do have an adult program as well, where you can track your minutes read and earn some fun prizes as well. We're also having a community scavenger hunt out of the Bob Lucas Branch in June, and then out of the main library in July. So lots of fun. We're also going to have an upcoming murder mystery and other programs as well. So I know that's a lot. I did bring a plethora of handouts and flyers that are on the piano in the back, so please help yourselves to those because we have a lot of programs. And you can also visit the website. We have our events page that outlines all of that. So let's see. We're excited to bring back all of these in-person programs, especially those that we get to partner with our community organizations. For example, we partnered with the Pride Committee to be the opening ceremony site for the first annual Pride Walkabout, which was so much fun. Thank you, Nick. And then this last Saturday, we partnered with the Historical Society to host a wonderful doon-teen celebration. Thank you, Veronica, and everyone else for including us in that planning as well. We're sponsoring, again, the Rotary Summer Concert Series at Farnsworth Park, which kicks off July 9th. So hope to see all of you there. They're really fun. And then just a really quick reminder that we have a community events calendar where anyone can add their program. So if you visit our website, you can also, if you have news that you want to share, we do a newsletter called Altadena Connections. If you email us at news@altdinallibrary.org, we'll include that in future e-blasts as well. And you can sign up for those e-blasts. I highly encourage you to because it's information that's being sent to us from like lots of local groups as well. Again, thank you for your time. Sorry my presentation didn't show up. It's okay. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from the council? Would you be willing to speak to a neighborhood watch group regarding the tax?
Oh, of course.
Okay.
Yeah. Happy to go out and talk to anybody. But yeah, the deadline's June 30th. So we would definitely want to talk to people soon, especially about the exemption.
Oh, okay. All right, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Thanks.
Okay, we're moving along here. And we have the Altadena Chamber of Commerce, Doug Cauliflower.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody.
Just a couple of things. First off, hopefully most of you are aware, but we had our annual installation and awards dinner on May 20th honoring our Citizen of the Year, Deb Halberstadt, and our Business of the Year, Stacy Whitney, and the Altadena Farmers Market. A wonderful turnout, almost 150 people in attendance. And one of the major goals for that evening is to raise money for the Marion Wolf Schalager Scholarship Fund. We raised a little over $8,000 this year, so I think that's our all-time high and delighted for the support of the community. And those monies are targeted for high school seniors in our community to help defray some of the cost of higher education. So wonderful evening, and those of you that missed this year, hopefully you won't make the same mistake next year. Secondly, we have a small business mixer coming up on this Saturday by Allen Peck's company. It's going to be held at the library, I'm assuming in the community room, Nikki? Yeah. From 2:30 to, hold on. I'm sorry. 2:30 to 4:30, is that correct? I'm sorry. Thank you. And Allen's company, they make wonderful cookies, preserves, and lots of other tasty treats. So if you have some time, please stop in and visit that. Be a nice event. And then I know Nikki just mentioned it, and I'm going to slip my Rotary hat on here for just a moment. And the summer concerts kick off just two weeks from Saturday at Farnsworth Park. If you haven't ever been, you certainly should do so. It's free. We have wonderful bands. I did leave some flyers back on the piano. Thanks, Reggie. And you can also get the information on altadinarotary.org as well. And that's the extent of what I have, unless anybody has any questions. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Deb. Okay, we now have Neighbors Building a Better Altadena. Joan Reback.
Thank you, council, for your time, for giving me the time. For those who don't know, Neighbors Building a Better Altadena, we are refocusing ourselves since the pandemic on trying to facilitate and nurture an informed community. So all of those things that you aren't aware of, like when you have choices of what electric company, part of your electric bill, do you want the sustainable people to be providing your electricity, or you're regular, and what does it all mean, and where does it all go? Or what are those things on our property taxes? What are all those different things that we pay for? And where does all that money go? And what comes back into our community? Anyway, we're trying to focus forums on all of these different kinds of things. We are starting, though, with the most important thing facing our community right now, and that's water. We have a water symposium that we're organizing for Altadena on July 23rd. This is going to be stunning. It's coming together better than we even imagined. So this will be three hours, 9 to 12. I love it that the town council and the library is here, because they won't let us use this building, because we're not the town council. So if you want to, you know, co-sponsor with us or something, or if the library wants to give us the space. Anyway, we're looking for the space, just saying. And so it will be three parts. The first part is where does our water come from? So I've lived in Colorado. I've lived in Northern California. We all hated LA because they were taking all of our water. I moved to LA, and nobody even knows where their water comes from. We hated LA because they were stealing our water, right? But now, you guys don't even know. We don't even know. So anyway, where does our water come from? What's a watershed? How do our water companies get their water? And where does it come from? Then, what is the current situation with our water now and projected into the future? And what can we do to adapt? Speakers are Tim Brick, who is the Managing Director of the Arroyo Seco Foundation, an environmental group in Southern California. He's previously served on the Board of the Alliance for Water Efficiency, an international leader in water conservation, and on the Board of Directors for the Metropolitan Water District of Southern California, where he served for 28 years. And Eileen Alduendo, she was the Watershed Coordinator for the Arroyo Seco Foundation. She facilitated restoration education programs and projects. Her experience includes developing and managing community water conservation education and rainwater harvesting projects. I do believe she worked on planting a bunch of the trees that we have planted in Altadena. We have Tony Zampiello, who's Executive Officer for the Maine San Gabriel Basin Water Master and Raymond Basin Management Board. And he oversees groundwater quality and supply management, and directs functions associated with groundwater production, well construction, groundwater treatment, and resource planning. We have a call-in too, and I don't know if we're going to get them, but I'm going to say it anyway, at JPL. JT Rager is an earth scientist specializing in the topic of freshwater, and his research from satellites focuses on measuring changes in Earth's water cycle with a particular focus on hydraulic extremes, changing water resources, and implications for society. We have somebody coming from the LA County Department of Public Works, Rubio Canyon Water District for our water companies. And then, what can we do to adapt? So far, we have Kathy Musial, who's Curator of Living Collections for the Huntington Gardens for more than 35 years, has written publications. Oh, she's the Altadena Tree Warrior, not Eileen. And she teaches about where our water comes from, who uses it, and how to appropriate plant selections and good watering practices for home gardens. And she also talks about heat island effects and capturing carbon from the atmosphere, et cetera. We'll have some other landscaping people to really talk about what we can do ourselves. We're looking at maybe getting some water capture, gray water use, that kind of thing incorporated in that part. Am I two minutes up? I was talking fast.
Two? Yeah. You're five minutes. Sorry.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Can you repeat the date again?
July 23rd. 9 to 12.
9 to 12. Looking for location.
Okay.
And really, I hope you all will be there. We're getting these fabulous speakers, so we really want a good turnout. And get all of your constituents to come, please.
Good information.
For sure.
That's good information. Thank you, Joan. Okay, we're going to move on to our committee reports. We have Communication Committee, Nick Arzon.
Thank you, Chair. Communication Committee is in our final stages of completing the new neighbor welcome packs. I'm very excited about these. As a reminder, the packs are intended to warmly welcome folks moving into homes in Altadena. The communication committee was formed to make sure that people in the community knew what was going on, similar to Joan's focus. And we realized that maybe informing our youth and our new residents would kind of give us a good start to doing that. The packs will provide valuable info to help the new people move, maneuver through town and settle into their new homes. The committee will also create a digital version for the AT website and discuss making those packs available to current residents as well. Our next steps will be review of the intended contents by our committee, the executive committee, and the council as a whole. So my fellow council members, if you're not on my committee, you will have a voice in this. Once that review process is complete, we hope to immediately begin assembling the packs and delivering them to new residents, hopefully as early as August. A similar pack is being created for new council members to welcome them and help them find the best way to communicate with and serve our residents. That pack is aimed for a completion date of September, just in time for any new members that might be seated in our fall elections. And as always, the Communication Committee will keep the full council informed and will move forward only after we have the majority of your approval. Thank you.
Thank you for your report. Thank you. We move on to Safe Streets. Councilmember Wong.
Thank you. Yes, I'd love to give everybody an update in June. So May was Bike Month, so we did a lot of great advocacy to empower youth by bicycle and just thinking about moving by bicycle. And then in June, time flies when you're having fun. It was 6:09. We did a follow-up of the Berkeley Safe Trek Community Pedestrian Bicycle Safety Training, and the follow-up was to do a walk audit and sort of help our community learn what it's like to actually walk around your community and sort of identify streets and, you know, different areas where you feel. And we also learned about Street Stories. So Street Stories is a GIS mapping tool that then residents, people who live, work, and play in Altadena can just kind of give input, so that it kind of creates a story of your environment. So that was Train the Trainer we did on 6:09. So if anybody wants to learn more or get involved, our next meeting is 6:30, where we're going to learn a little bit more about Metro's active transportation plan. And we're also going to be evaluating a complete street assessment. So there was different studies done during COVID, so that was another study. So that's coming up in July. And then, hopefully, the goal with the Mariposa Market will be to feel Mariposa between El Molino and Lake as sort of an expanded market where people can be encouraged to move by different modes to the market. And so, yeah, get involved. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving right along to education. Victoria, Councilmember Nat.
I wanted to remind the community and my fellow council members that we've reestablished the Altadena Town Council Education Committee. I'm happy to report that Councilmember Sylvia Vega will be joining the committee, even though she's not here tonight. We're looking for residents of Altadena. Angie, I remember reaching out to you, who have or have had their children in Altadena public schools to join as well. Chair Jones and I met with PUSD Superintendent Brian McDonald to affirm Altadena's commitment to our public schools and to invite him to a future town council meeting. We also discussed partnership, possible partnership opportunities. I wanted to also invite the community to the Pasadena Chapter of Integrated Schools Community Conversation, which is taking place this Saturday, June 24th, from 10:00 AM to noon at Perry's Joint on Lincoln. Anyone who's interested or invested in our public schools is invited to attend to learn about the history of our public schools and how school choice affects their future. There is an Eventbrite link to register, and both the flyer and the link will be on the ATC website. Thank you.
Okay. We move on to land use, and the Chair of Land Use, Diane Markison, is not here, but you'll do her report.
I will. The Land Use Committee met on June 7th, and the committee heard a presentation on ADUs and the work being done by LA County on the West San Gabriel Valley Plan. More information can be found on YouTube by searching for Altadena Land Use Committee, June 7th, 2022. And that's that for land use.
Okay. Moving on, now we have our general public comment. Do we have public comment?
We have one.
Is that all the, we want to bring it up?
You can bring them up to the end.
Yeah.
In person?
Let's see. Do I get them?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Okay, so our first public comment comes from Charmaine Griffin. Homes on Metro on the last stop. Please make the last, okay, so Loma Alta, you're on Loma Alta. Oh, you get to come up?
Yeah.
Because we don't have to read these. Come up, Charmaine, to the, are you still here? She just left. Okay. So she's basically, she's on Loma Alta Drive, and she'd like the last stop of the bus route to be on Fair Oaks and Woodbury. Okay.
She wants to reduce.
She wants to reduce it down. Okay. Is Glendar here? Glendar Haskin? No. Okay. Is there a community meeting? Let's see, Loma Alta Catalytic Converter next event. Okay. Can you read that? I think we answered the question. CHP answered, or Sheriff's Station answered, that you're working on the next, the date for the next catalytic converter edging event?
And then Metro, on the 6:30, we'll talk further about active transportation. That's what that is. Is there a community meeting with Metro?
Okay. Is Marilyn here? Please come up. And you've got two, so go ahead and, go ahead here.
Good evening. So I'm a resident.
Oh, okay. Two minutes for each one.
All right. So I'm on Grand Door between Harriet and Mariposa. I'm in Chris O'Malley's tract. And the concern is people who park their cars for long periods of time. Half of our street is private and half is not. And I'm on the private part, which is not so good as far as services. And so people who park their cars for long periods of time, and what is the protocol for working on that?
You can talk to the sheriff.
The Sheriff's Department?
Ah.
Okay. So also, at the end of the street where Harriet and Grand Door, cars are parked there also, where it's difficult to see how, you have to pull out to get onto Harriet, and it's dangerous? So what's the protocol for?
That goes to public works. That's a difference.
So?
What will happen is we will give this to Chris, and he will follow up with you on it.
Okay. My other concern is, not concern, but the pavement of streets in Altadena. I noticed some of the streets are starting to get paved, and I know they hadn't been done in about 20 years. And our tract area is the poorest in Altadena. I did a map. I went into the county and did a map, and it gave a color-coded map of ratings. And our area is next to the bottom rating. The last rating is failed, and ours is poor, and it's the worst one in Altadena. So my concern is, when are we scheduled to get our streets paved?
So when you say poor, you're talking about poorer streets?
Poor quality.
Quality of the streets.
Like potholes, like, you know, just all kind of cracks in the street and everything. So.
That will go to Chris, and he can get back to you, because the county has a schedule
for all of that. Yeah, so that's what I wanted to know.
And if you live on a private street, they don't?
Yeah, I know that. I know that. But my whole area looks terrible.
Gerald?
So when they, when they paved my neighborhood, I asked the guy. He says Altadena is in the system now. That is our timeline. They do it about every 15 years of when they repave it. So they're going along on their order that they have. So they are doing our neighborhoods now. It's on schedule.
Yeah. I'm quite sure there is a schedule, but I'm just saying what I saw was, the schedule should be the poorest streets first. And that's what my concern is. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
If you have time afterward, I'd like to share some stuff with you, too.
You have to fill out a comment card. Sure.
Is Deborah still here? Oh, that's you. Okay, go ahead.
My name is Deborah. I've been an Altadena resident for over 30 years. The question I have, before I get my question, I just contacted Department of Public Works because I was concerned about the repavement as well that occurred between Moringo and Fair Oaks. There are no street reflectors and so forth. I've gotten in contact with them. That is supposed to be taken care of, and if they don't get back with me by Friday, then I will take it a step further. So there is going to be something done on that roadway. They did concur with the observation that I made, and so they will be doing something about that immediately. My question right now is, the slowdown safety signs, they're a wreck. The poles are there, no signs. The signs are down. You need to either repair them or remove them. It's a blight on our community. And so I would like to know where we're at on that.
Can I make just a quick comment? So one thing is obviously tracking of what's there, what's not being fixed, or what, you know, all these. So the Works app, LA County has the Works app. So when I see them down, or I will put it in there, and they do respond.
Okay.
So you can write down, it's public works, and then it'll say, I think, dangerous, or you'll see unsafe conditions.
Okay.
And then you can put down slow streets.
Good.
And then it'll GIS locate it, and then they'll address it. Either it goes away, or it gets repaired.
Great.
Thank you, Dorothy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And we're going to, I think we have quite a few left, right?
We have two.
Two? Okay.
Ella, did you want to make your public comment directly? Go ahead.
It's just a quick question for Athens, because I know you said that food waste, and I want to clarify, all food waste has to start going in the green waste container, right? And so I'm wondering, how would you communicate that to the Altadena community? Because I know habits are hard to change. And so if bears are targeting, you know, cans with food in them, and we're making the switch for food to be in the green waste cans instead of the black trash cans, how will that be communicated?
You can actually talk to him afterwards.
Oh, perfect. And just as an FYI, and even though we don't technically respond to these during the meeting, we have had presentations about that in these meetings. So just so you know, there's, I think, a number of different ways that we're trying to get the word out to the Altadena community.
Sounds good.
Okay. Great. And is Dan still here?
Yeah. I saw him.
Come on up, Dan.
Thank you. Thank you very much. My name's Dan Shapiro. I've been an Altadena resident for 22 years and was a recent recipient of the Sheriff's Department citation for having a dog. for having a dog off-leash up at Farnsworth Park at 7:00 in the morning, me along with about 10 other members of the community. So since we were the only ones in the park, we were beginning to question whether or not this made sense, this policy of dogs off-leash early in the morning and citations resulting, whether or not it made sense. I began to do some research on it, found that in New York City, dogs are permitted off-leash in Central Park and virtually every other park in the city up until 9:00 in the morning because typically the parks are not otherwise being used. So we've prepared a petition to have Farnsworth Park designated as a pilot project for altering the county code to permit dogs off-leash in certain designated areas of the park, Farnsworth Park to begin with, up until 9:00 in the morning, Monday through Friday, and 8:00 in the morning on Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays. Reason being, the park is typically not used except the tennis courts and the, what do they call it? Pickleball. Pickleball. Otherwise, the park is not used except by us. So that's, I have about 120 signatures on a petition. I'd like to present to the council, if you're ready to receive, and/or designate requests that we put on the agenda for an agenda item and consideration of our proposal.
Okay. What we'll do is, your councilperson is, is that you?
I guess so. Yeah.
So we're going to, yeah. We will turn it over to them, and they'll handle it.
You want the petitions? Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Dan. Thanks a lot. Appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Good. Okay. We move on to our Census Track reports. 4601?
Yes. I just wanted to update the community that there are several issues of concern that I've heard from residents about, and I wanted to let people know that I am following up on these. The first is that a number of folks who hike the Altadena Crest Trail have been concerned regarding a potential zoning violation where a tall fence topped with razor wire at the top of East Glen Allen Court, leading into the Altadena Crest Trail. It's an easement for fire. But that zoning enforcement, I've submitted a request to LA County Zoning Enforcement. I submitted that at the end of May, and I'm still waiting to hear about. They're going to go out and inspect and decide whether or not there is a zoning violation. But I wanted the community to know that this is in process. The second issue that's also been raised by folks in my Census Track has to do with Bureau Conservancy, which is upgrading the trail space off East Loma Alta across from the Rubio Canyon Dam. I have been in contact with some members of the Conservancy, and what I'm trying to do is find a way to meet with them so that perhaps we can invite them to a town council meeting to make a presentation about how that upgrade and updating of the trail is going to proceed. Folks are a little bit nervous about construction noise, dust, and the impact on the local community. So that is also in process, but I wanted to at least update folks so that they know that I have not forgotten about these issues. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Before we move on to adjournment, I wanted to mention, I forgot to mention Dr. Thomas.